Good evening and welcome to the January 9, 2025, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
President.
Rothman.
Here.
Steve Posito.
Here.
Leanie Martin.
President.
Brown.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Capone.
Here.
Young Gert.
Here.
Spiegelman.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Boomen.
Here.
Vice President Vehi.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have no announcements this evening other than to welcome our new manager, Mr. Christman, to his first meeting. We are delighted to have you here with us during your first week, and we look forward to working together and learning from you and the expertise that you will bring to this job and to the township. So, welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
All right. We will turn it over to the public for comment on items that the board will be voting on this evening. If you wish to speak, please come forward and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Abington. I'm Adele Cubell. The minutes remain a distortion of information. To write a positive summary, remarks are cherry picked, and citizen statements are excluded. Changing the emphasis of a statement allows for incorrect summaries to be written, run-on sentences, and odd wording is utilized to undermine citizen's statements. Why, Mr. Hecker, must this leadership rely on censorship to polish their image? Over 200 citizens signed a petition agreeing that Mr. Manfredi should not serve in any capacity after retirement. Mr. Hecker, the minute secretary working under your direction will not record the purpose of this petition or any petition. You are suppressing the opinion of over 200 citizens. Again, in the December video, the blotting of voices is used to edit. Turning off microphone is used to prevent citizens from hearing your remarks. The video still documents that the power balance here is broken. Overseeing the work of Mr. Manfredi is the job of commissioners. Instead, Mr. Manfredi became your mentor, your admired leader, a support for your families. Mr. Manfredi's retirement is an event that is not happening. Not at all. Mr. Manfredi is Executive Director of Economic Development. Mr. Manfredi spent eight years positioning speculators in neighborhoods.
Okay.
Now, these VIP speculators are awaiting zoning changes and variances. Commissioners, you will vote the variances and zoning changes forward. The Rothley Slum property owner had a cakewalk. This administration and commissioners are involved with private real estate transactions regularly. In Abington, rich developers are our community planners. Taxpayers are absorbing the cost of the apartment complexes of billionaires. And nothing you do with bags is going to fix the lack of cleaning. We need a better street department with more men. The street department is being stretched too thin. This has gone on for years. The streets are filled with filth because there's not enough people, and the main problem we have is not bags, not even clothes. It's drinking containers, large-scale Wawa cups, Jumbo Dunkin' Donuts cups, and you're adding Popeyes now and a new Wawa that doesn't clean properly. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? If so, please come forward.
Hello, Ethan Simon Hemlock Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you for coming.
I'm here to support the single-use plastic ban proposal being put forward by the EAC later today. This proposal will play an important role in reducing pollution in the township, particularly in our streams. As a streamkeeper and an occasional picker-upper of trash along the roads, I assure you, this is a real need. The proposal will bring other benefits as well, and I've given opinions on those in a letter to my commissioner, Mr. Weingrad. Many neighboring townships have already adopted this sensible practice, and I understand from sitting in on an EAC meeting that Karen McGarren-Rosen has spent at least 100 hours speaking with people in other communities, businesses, residents, and the like. As a result, I believe the EAC will present a well-considered proposal for an ordinance and its successful implementation. And I'd like to pay a compliment to them with thanks. I think it's a really professional, well-considered job. Now, people are often resistant to change. I remember the uproar when the township was going to change the trash system to take away people's own trash cans and replace them with township-owned ones. Now, I don't think you'll find anybody who wants to go back in the other direction. So, I urge you to consider all the evidence that you'll see from other communities who successfully implemented this sensible and beneficial proposal. And I'll close by saying, you know, I was thinking about this. I know you have a job to support the township, but you also need to stay elected. So, I think the political risk of taking action is extremely low. Many townships have already done this. And in fact, there's going to be potentially political risk at some point if we take no action, and people look around and they say, how come we're the only ones who don't have this? On the other hand, I think the majority will view a positive action on this matter as a display of great civic leadership. So, I wanted to call your attention to the proposal coming today and hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jackie Pickering, and I reside on the fairway in Abington. And I did speak to you last meeting in December, and I talked about the environmental and pollution issues related to single-use plastics. So, tonight, I just wanted to say quickly that there are also many practical issues, such as the fact that Pendott spends millions of taxpayer dollars to clean up this litter and trash. Indeed, a study of nine municipalities in Pennsylvania found that they spent close to $70 million cleaning up this plastic waste. So, I think it's, you know, it's time for us to make some moves. Why pass the ban? Well, if plastic is everywhere and in everything that we eat and see and drink, then I think the only way to make it go away is to stop using it and then therefore push the producers to stop producing it. The city of Philadelphia released a study on the effectiveness of their plastic bag ban, and after they put it in place, they found that the bag use, the plastic bag use in the city decreased by over 90%. So, that's pretty significant. And I'm looking at Abington as one of the 10th-largest cities in Pennsylvania. So, it means if we do it, we're setting a really good example, and we're keeping a lot of plastic out of the landfill. And just in closing, I'd say that over the holidays, I went to both Costco and Aldi's. I saw hundreds of shoppers. Not one single person cared that they were not going to get a single, you know, a plastic bag. They all brought their own, or they used the boxes that the stores get their products in. So, I would like to urge you to vote to pass the bag ban. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is Belle Sherwood, and I'm with Penn Environment. We're the statewide environmental advocacy nonprofit dedicated to ensuring all Pennsylvanians have access to clean air, clean water, protected open spaces, and a safe, livable climate. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Abington's proposed ban on single-use plastic bags as well. I'd like to start off by thanking the Board of Commissioners for considering this important legislation, and of course, the EAC for driving it forward. At Penn Environment, we've worked for the past several years with many of your neighbors on tackling plastic pollution, and that's because we use a ton of plastic in our everyday lives. In fact, each year, Americans generate 35 million tons of plastic waste, but less than 6% of it gets recycled. We use items like plastic bag once, plastic bags once, often just for a couple of minutes, and then throw them away. But with plastic, there really is no away. Whether it ends up landfilled, incinerated, or littered directly into our environment, plastic can harm our wildlife and our health for hundreds of years, if not longer. Plastic bags specifically are almost impossible to recycle. They clog storm drains, litter our parks and open spaces, and can snare or choke wildlife. These bags can break down, but only into tiny pieces of plastic called microplastics. At Penn Environment, we've tested over 100 waterways in Pennsylvania and across the state and found microplastics in every single one, including Tugany Creek, which runs through this township. They're in our air, so we're breeding them in our water, so we're drinking them, and our food, so we're eating them. In fact, a study has shown that each week, the average American ingests five grams of plastic just by living our day-to-day lives, which is roughly the equivalent to eating, breathing, and drinking a credit card's worth of plastic every week. By our estimate, Abington's residents use over 20 million plastic bags every year, so banning plastic bags here would go a long way towards addressing the problem. We have to start upstream and cut off pollution at the source so it can't become waste, can't become litter, and can't harm our wildlife or our health. Plastic bags, bag bans like the one proposed here are a proven solution to this problem. We've seen them done successfully at the state and local level across the country, and momentum is building right here in Pennsylvania as well. There are 35 plastic bag bans in Pennsylvania right now, including ones passed by your neighbors in Cheltenham, Upper Moreland, Upper Dublin, and Springfield. Abington certainly isn't alone in this effort. This ordinance is a great first step in helping the township reduce plastic waste and litter. And if passed, it will encourage residents to use more sustainable alternatives when they shop, like reusable bags, and help make us more aware of how we can switch from single-use plastic to reusable alternatives in other parts of our lives. Abington has a chance to be a leader on this issue, and I ask the Board of Commissioners to vote yes on pursuing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward? If so, please do so. Ms. Cubell? No, you're out of line. And I'm just going to say, you're on notice. You're not to interrupt the meeting. No, no, no.
Ever told anyone get that many minutes?
She got three minutes. She got three minutes. And so, please do not interrupt the meeting again. Mr. Rooney, please come forward.
I thought your hammer was for more interruptive. Hi, I'm Joe Rooney. I live in Ardsley. First, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope you had a wonderful Christmas also. For Mr. Christman, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. And you have an awesome name, and I hope that you can help lead the township with integrity, with courage, provide some leadership, and also some wise counsel. And I know everybody in the township wishes you well and hopes, you know, that you're very successful. So, thank you for joining us. How about that election in November? Was that awesome, or was that awesome? I didn't get a chance to join you. Mr. Brodsky, isn't that awesome?
Yeah. Mr. Rooney, this is the portion of the agenda where you're...
I'm saying, shh, 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 wasting my time.
No, no, no. What I'm telling you is, you know that this is the portion of the agenda. If you have comments about what we're...
I wanted to say hi, Mr. Christman.
You did. And now, if you...
Now, I'm wasting my time.
If you have comments about what we're voting on tonight...
Now, I do.
Well, let's get to it.
So, it was a great election. I didn't get a chance to say that before.
Yeah, move ahead, Mr. Rooney.
Golly, can I get 30 seconds more?
If you... Please continue.
Okay. So, this bag ordinance, I like to give it a little alternative point of view. First, I mean, I've read through it. I don't know if anybody does. We only have a certain amount of time here, and there's so much to talk about. So, it's to prohibit the degradation, diminution, and depletion of the public natural resources. That was never proven. In fact, when you started this whole thing off, you brought a guy up here who gave us fraudulent information, fraudulent pictures. If you were that confident that it did anything, you wouldn't need to rely on fraud. All right? So, if we look at California and we look at the obvious leadership failure in California, what we need is elected officials and our appointed leaders to focus on what's important in our township: public safety, fire safety, public works, and good, wise stewardship of our taxpayers. This is nothing but frothed in bubbles. If there was real data, they would prove it. First off, plastic bags do nothing for whatever microplastics are. There's no studies that say that. You're not banning plastic bags. You're picking on small businesses. You're adding costs to poor people, to elderly people, and to minorities. That's what you're doing. This is a hidden tax. That's what you're voting on. I know you feel good. You guys have no leadership at all. You're just following a pack. There's nothing scientific about it. The other thing I really love in this is if you look through our agenda, in our latest thing, we gave $43,851 to Rudolph Clark. So, $10,500 is a retainer. How much money did Rudolph Clark get to write this? Now, I know I only have a few seconds left, so nobody seems to talk about the very back page. A fine not to exceed $100 for the first violation, a fine not to exceed $200 for the second violation, a fine not to exceed $500 for the third violation. Now, all these and Whole Foods, they may scoff at something like that, but Joe's Market won't, and O'Neill's won't either. So, I don't know if it's going to be the police who are enforcing this, or it's just going to be some nagging nannies. But there's a really important thing here, and it says, "The township manager or designee has a responsibility for enforcement." Give us a break. This is a joke. Please do not vote yes for this. You are just making a tax for poor people. You aren't helping the environment. And if you really were, we wouldn't have 150 homes going into St. Basil's property. Thank you.
Anyone else here wish to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Christman as well. And I would just like to say, Mr. Christman, you already started by not getting back to me the second time. I appreciate it the first time, but when I laid out the problem to you, we had a serious problem with tonight's agenda. And it is important that residents are able to know what the government's doing. Number one, I hope you will vote for the bag ban just because of what some of the previous speakers said. It's way too late to even get started, but get started now, please. And number two, very quickly, the neighborly software should not be voted on tonight. It really has not had a proper vetting in front of Abington residents. This is, if you read the print, you are planning to do all kinds of add-ons and collect information on residents, which sometimes, when we go to the website to get something basic, we're required to put in an email or some other personal information that is not necessary. And so, already, you have been collecting data on us in a way that is not necessary and not desired, and the residents should be knowing more about this. The second thing is very, very important. You have an item on the agenda that should not be on there. 2241 Old Welsh Road has not properly applied for variances, is missing a great deal. They even added another paper with new information on January 2. That information didn't get to the Planning Commission or anybody else. And in that particular one, they said that their opinion is that strict compliance with the things they're asking for waivers on would create unnecessary impacts to the proposed development. But that's exactly what our laws are supposed to do, is to stop the impact of density on steep-sloped areas. And so, you have an obligation to actually follow the law and not be wavering these things away. The variance is needed. In one case, I was told perhaps a car portico would be considered a recessed, 10-foot recess for a garage. And the car portico actually does the opposite of what the intent of the ordinance is, which is to bring the building to the fore and put barrages behind. By allowing a portico to solve that problem, you are doing the opposite of what the ordinance... So, in no way that that should be allowed. And no variance was requested. So, it should not, it's not even complete. That's a zoning item and should go to the zoning hearing board. The same thing with the landscaping that is not met, and that should have been a variance at the zoning hearing board. Our engineer or our solicitor do not have the authority to remake the rules. They have the authority to obey the rules.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
All right. And I would like to see this item removed from the agenda and handled legally and properly, please. And, Mr. Christman, please do not let this be your legacy.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lehman, for your comments. And with that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Vehi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda. Listened as items A through B. Nice and move.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved and passed, I mean, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move straight into new business, and I will once again turn to Board Vice President Matt Vehi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First items, BOC-03010925. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-001, appointing Christopher Christman, Township Manager, as Township Secretary. Nice and move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next items, BOC-04010925. Motion to approve land development-24-01, 2241 Old Welsh Road as a preliminary major subdivision and land development plan and adopt Resolution 25-002. Nice and move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I have a question.
Commissioner Brown.
During the last meeting, we had a lot of residents that had come and expressed their concern about this project. I don't want to assume that their concerns have been addressed. Do we have any new feedback from the residents in regards to this issue?
Well, I'll turn to the Ward Commissioner first.
Yes, hi. The residents have met with the developer and spoke numerous times, and they have come to a resolution that they are satisfied with. And everyone was ready to proceed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Solicitor Gallagher, there was an earlier allegation that this process has not been done legally. Could you ensure the board or assure the board that that is in fact not the case?
Certainly. Over the last few days, we have coordinated with Mr. Hassan, the township's engineer, to review the various items that the speaker had identified. And I believe Mr. Hassan is on the Zoom and can speak to his analysis of those items. But, and he can go to more specifics, but in reviewing them with the engineer's office, the township, we are comfortable with the township proceeding this evening with the preliminary approval.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next items, BOC-05-010925. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-003, approving a lot line adjustment for 127 Stanley Avenue and 2122 Oakdale Avenue. Nice and move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next items, BOC-06-010925. Motion to authorize advertisement for an ordinance on single-use plastics and expanded polystyrene, styrene film products. Nice and move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Spiegelman? Vice President Vehi, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Colleagues, there's two overall, first of all, Karen, EAC, Andrea, thank you so much for your work on this. It's great to have volunteer boards that are engaged in our civic discourse like you. Probably would not be here without your... I saw you laugh at 100 Hours. I have no doubt it was 100 Hours' worth of work. So, thank you very much for your efforts. As you know, though, you know, I have some concerns that I'd like to raise now. And after this discussion, I intend to make two motions to amend the text, first being on the fee to be charged, the mandatory fee to be charged by merchants. I would like to remove that entirely from the ordinance. So, there's a 15-cent fee that would be required if a merchant were to provide a recycled paper bag. I have, you know, some philosophical concerns. Don't need to get into that. But for me, you know, we've been debating the, how plastics are polluting the environment, and this is a good move to prevent that plastic pollution. We've not been, like, discussing the scourge of paper bags and how that's damaging the environment. And while there might be reason to look at that in a future ordinance, right now, I think we should really be focusing on the issue of plastic bags. And I don't, and I don't want to put a nuisance charge, a required nuisance charge on residents should they forget their reusable bags and the merchant provides a paper bag. Additionally, I believe Karen, when you came back with your last round of research, there was, you know, pushback from merchants saying, well, they didn't object to the plastic bag ban. They would want the option not to charge because they already provide the paper bags, and they don't want to be required to charge that 15-cent charge on their customers. So, my first motion after this discussion would be to strike those provisions from the text. The second one being the requirement to promptly display the manufacturer's name as well as the contents of the bag itself. I'd like to strike that mainly because I've done some research. I was happy to see that the requirement that bags have 40% post-consumer-use material, it's very easy to find them. They're readily available through multiple wholesalers. What was really hard for me to find out is whether or not those bags would be printed with the requirements in this ordinance. Some wholesalers have it. Some, you just can't figure out what you're getting and what you're not. I don't see tremendous value in requiring this. It, to me, it's, you know, it allows some resident to complain that a merchant is not using the right bags. There's other ways to achieve that.[1674.67] I really think we should be focusing on whether it's a plastic bag or not, not whether it's, you know, a fully recycled bag. Although, again, they are readily available and at the same price as non-recycled bags. So, you know, I open, welcome all other debate terms here, but those would be the two things I would like to move to remove at the end of this debate.
Thank you, Vice President Bahe. Commissioner Rothman, and then I'll go to Commissioner Spiegelman.
I agree with the sentiments set forth by Vice President Bahe. I would submit that this is a significant leap or significant change for many people, including us when we go to the store, right, everybody out there, the thousands watching at home. With that said, we can change this if we find more information that supports what Commissioner Bahe just, just suggested. And I'd frankly encourage us to not, you know, my vibe is that this is, we're moving towards some implementation of something along these lines, and that we not just pass something and not go back and look at it regularly, which I know we do on most of the, you know, more seismic changes that we ever vote on. So, you know, I think that ultimately, I think this is the right thing to do, but I think that we do owe it to ourselves and to the residents to keep digging further. And I don't think that the right move would be to sit back and wait and just wait another year while we figure that out. I think these measures that Commissioner Bahe mentioned are pretty easy for us to say, like, you know what, that kind of makes some sense, even if we're not thousand percent right. And I don't think that you're saying that, you know, all of this, that you did some research and that, it lends itself towards that. So I would strongly suggest that we move forward with that in mind. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hecker. First, I'll just have to quickly say, Karen McGary-Rosen, you, as always, you've done Ward 11 proud. Thank you so much for, you and your EAC colleagues, all of your tireless work on this. I definitely appreciate Vice President Bahe, your, your comments and your perspective. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I'm actually going to put two people on the spot. I wanted to ask you, Mr. President, if, if you are amenable to this, and if Ms. McGary-Rosen is amenable to this, I would like to get her thoughts, but not force her, you know, not force her up to the mic, but I really, I would like to get her thoughts on Vice President Bahe's proposals. And then, at the same time, the second proposal, by the way, I'm, I'm totally on board with that, with regard to the nuisance fee. I have found in, I mean, in the research I've done, but also in just in my experience, I really do think it's helpful. I wanted to ask, again, this is where I'm putting you on the spot, Vice President Bahe, would you be amenable to, this is an and/or, instead of a total removal, a lessening of the nuisance fee to something like, like ten, like ten cents, which bring, would bring it in line with a lot more municipalities, not just here in Pennsylvania, but other ones that I've encountered, like, like New York City, for instance? And, or, this is the or, would you be amenable to, be willing to consider a, I guess, it's the opposite of a sunset clause, a sunrise clause, where we phase in the nuisance fee after X amount of time that the ordinance has been in place, but still sort of keep it on the record? So I guess my first question is, if you're, if you're okay with it, President Hecker, and if Ms. McGary-Rosen is okay, I really am curious as to what her take is on, on Vice President Bahe's proposals, which I do respect and take seriously.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that, but why don't we start with your question?
Okay, let's do that reverse then. Or I could just keep talking, people like that.
So my motion will be to strike entirely. I just, I'm not inclined to support a fee. That said, I had thought about that sunrise provision as well. I think my preference would be that, however, to enact that a later date if we think it's warranted.
I respect, and I'll just tell you, Matt, however I end up voting, I respect your, I definitely...
No, it's fun to have a debate.
I know, isn't it? And then, I'm sorry, by putting my constituent, friend and constituent on the spot if she so desires.
You are certainly not obligated, but if you wish to come forward, Karen, please do so.
So...
Thank you, Karen, I'm sorry.
I was prepared, there might have been. So I'm Karen McGary-Rosen, and...
I'm Andrea Sue.
Yeah, hi, Andrea.
So Vice President Bahe and I have had conversations about the fee from his last opposition that he mentioned at one of the meetings, I don't remember which one. So, and he, you know, despite us coming back and preventing, presenting more information, he still was not in support of the fee. So we actually went back to our, to Penn Environment, where the draft ordinance is from. It wasn't the solicitor who drafted the ordinance, it was the EAC taking from Penn Environment, as previously, there was something mentioned about that earlier today. But anyway, we said, you know, is it, is it, should, is it still worthwhile to have the ban and not have the fee? And the answer was overwhelmingly, yes, of course. It is, it is important to pass the plastic bag ban and not have the fee. As far as the, removing the printing on the bag, I don't think that that's that big of a whoop. I mean, Penn Environment folks are here, they're shaking their head, no.
That's a technical term of the environment.
Karen, is that an official environmental term?
Excuse me?
A big whoop, is that a...
A big whoop. It's an official environmental term, yes, thank you.
Widely used.
So, I don't know if you want, you have any other questions that you would need input from us, or...
If we do, we know where you're seating.
Okay, that's fine, all right.
Thank you.
President Hecker?
Commissioner Zepone, we have got two in the room, and then I'll get to you.
Okay.
Commissioner Schreiber, then Commissioner Henry.
So I had flagged the exact same thing about the fifteen cents. I also want it removed. And it was interesting, the person who spoke about having the boxes at Costco and stuff like that, I am assuming there was, there's not a charge for those? And so I'm wondering, in some ways...
They get rid of the trash that way.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I'm wondering that. I had the experience of going into a restaurant and picking something up and being charged for the paper bag that it, my stuff was put into, which was totally annoying to me. I had bags in my car, it never occurred to me that I was, had to bring a bag for that purpose and that I was going to get charged for the paper bag that it was put in. So, yeah, I am in total support of this. And I've had some difficulty, as Karen knows, with this ordinance. I do reuse my plastic bags many times, sometimes. I said in a recent email, I tape them together when they have holes in them and reuse them. So like, I'm kind of crazy with my plastic bags. I'm not sure that this really solves our plastic problem. I am totally against Styrofoam, and if we could get rid of that, that's, that would be a great thing, in my opinion. But I do understand that most people don't recycle their plastic bags, and so I'm willing to consider this ordinance. I know this is just a motion to advertise, and we'll probably speak about this again. But, yeah, so I just wanted to give my opinion on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Henry.
So from, going from ten to fifteen, it did sort of spark the, this is a nuisance fee, and I understand the point of the nuisance fee, but I also get annoyed when I have to pay more to use a credit card than for cash. Even just like the language around it, I really wish that were a way for us to have it be a benefit. So if you didn't use any bags, you have like, I don't know, like a ten cent discount the other way, you know? So you're going to be credited for it, because it is hard to remember, and it's not a big deal if you don't have to pay for it or whatever. But if there is a perk to be, to bringing it, well, if there's no plastic bags, you know, you can carry stuff out more easily. But I don't, I, I know it feels annoying to go into, you know, Target, one of these major stores, and be charged more on top of it for the bags that they should be providing anyway. So, and I know when you're doing the self-checkout, it says, how many bags did you use? And I'm like, come over and check, you know?
What are you suggesting, Commissioner Henry?
Well, so, right, so like, I would love for that question to still be there, like, how many bags did you use? And you answer that question, and you don't pay for it, but you answer the question. We're keeping tabs on the number.
Now, it's a good point.
That are coming in and going out, and making you think about it, making you be aware of it, and don't, you know, take more than you're, you're supposed to. But, yeah, I don't like it coming out of the consumer's pocket, but I'd like them to get some benefit from, from remembering to bring their reusable bags, so that those reusable bags are indeed reused. Because otherwise, that's a lot of material that's being paid for every single time, and then maybe stored in a garage or something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zepone, then Commissioner Ball.
Okay. Excuse me. I had brought up a question a year ago when the presenters of this ban had put forth this proposal. I asked, they keep talking about how many whales are killed by bags. I had asked a question over a year ago, how many human beings did those reusable bags cause? Was never given an answer over a year. A speaker tonight brought up seventy million dollars Penn dot spending to clean up plastic bags. I disagree with that. It's seventy million dollars cleaning up all highway debris. That's all highway debris, not just plastic bags, okay? It's an extra burden to our taxpayers to have to buy these other special bags. And like myself, like Commissioner Schreiber said, I use them all the time and keep reusing them. So I just think we really need to look at this. Abington needs to continue to be a leader and not a follower. Just because other townships are doing it, we have to get on the bandwagon. No, Abington, we're leaders here, okay? So I just want to have everybody keep that in mind. I just think we need to go a different direction, and not a complete ban on reusable bags. That's just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. Commissioner Ball.
Thank you, President Hecker. I agree fully with Commissioner Zepone that we shouldn't just do this because we're keeping up with the Joneses. I think that's a terrible logic and reasoning. But here are my comments after careful thought, research, and discussion with a number of Ward residents on all sides of this issue. I've decided to support the ban on single-use plastic bags. This is not a decision I've made lightly. I fully agree with Vice President Bahe. We have to strike from the record the fifteen-cent mandatory charge. I think that's, I think it's a note-brainer. We can't mandate that businesses in the township charge customers something for, for this. Frankly, like a lot of commissioners, I thought the first draft of the ordinance was to be kind, not, not a good one. I appreciated it coming to us, but the draft in substance itself was, was not great. And the initial arguments made to us were not terribly compelling, but we've kept the conversation going, and I appreciate that we have, and I'm very comfortable with where we are now. I understand the counterarguments. Some are questioning whether plastic banning, plastic bags will have a significant environmental impact. Others are worried about the potential cost or inconveniences. These are all valid points. We've worked really hard to ensure this policy does not impose an undue burden, I can't say there's no burden, but not an undue burden on local businesses or families. Others have argued that people, instead of throwing away single-use plastic bags, are now instead going to throw away more of the costly or more environmentally intensive plastic reusable bags. In the end, when I look at the big picture, I believe that the step we're taking tonight is, is necessary and is the right thing to do, but it's not in and of itself enough, as others have said. No, as no one disputes, I don't think, single-use plastic bags lead to litter and pollution in our waterways and natural areas. And if anyone, lest anyone think, microplastics are some boogeyman that was made up, there are studies from the U.S. Geological Survey, the Environmental Protection Agency, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, there are studies from the NIH about the, the impact on people's health. So this is not information that's very difficult to find. They harm wildlife, they clog our waste systems, and they break down into microplastics that contaminate our environment for generations. While it's true that one policy is not going to solve all these problems, it will make a measurable difference, and it does send a strong message that we're committed to reducing waste and building a more sustainable future. Very quickly to wrap up, beyond that, this ban encourages a cultural shift, which I think we should not discount. Small actions like choosing reusable bags do lead to more significant changes in how we think about consumption and environmental stewardship. We're not just banning bags, but we're trying to foster a mindset that values our planet and its resources. And finally, to those who've shared that focusing on this ordinance means that we are, by extension, not focusing on issues like crime, I'd like to note, for example, that two years ago, the board passed fourteen to one, a robust budget that added extra police officers to the streets and added significant upgrades to the APD's readiness capabilities and communications infrastructure. We can walk and chew gum. I think we have an obligation to monitor the impacts of this policy, as Commissioner Rothman said, and remain open to adjustments as, if necessary. But tonight, I'll vote to ban single-use plastic bags because I believe we are responsible for acting. It's a step forward, a small one, but it's an important one toward a cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable community. End scene. Thank you.
Commissioner Ball, as always, thank you for your thoughtful comments. Are there other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Laney Martin.
As a small business owner, and most of the people I interact that are small business owners that provide products for customers, they're, you know, taking things from their, from their establishments, this is something that has been built in to our thought process. It has evolved over time, especially when, as more and more products are being made on the market to address the need for providing bags for your customers. So I think that Abington businesses that I've interacted with and spoke with have already had this on their mind, have already transitioned, and especially ones that are using DoorDash, using different kinds of programs like that Uber Eats, Grubhub, you're scored on those platforms if you don't have sustainable type of products to put your food in. And it does make a difference to individuals who are buying those products. And I think it is generational, you know, not, a lot of younger people use those apps continuously, and so they judge those things. Maybe older generation don't necessarily order all their food through those apps. You know, you can even order food from Chestnut Hill for a ice cream. My daughter introduced that to me recently, it was amazing, Chestnut Hill ice cream from, to Willa Grove. But anyhow, I'm digressing, but I think this is something that I'm glad to see that Abington is doing, and to help perhaps make our businesses more competitive in a way. I don't think we really have discussed that, that impact. But I know that internally, if you're trying to get more customers, especially on those platforms, you are definitely thinking about this.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? And just before we move forward, just a reminder that tonight's motion is a motion to advertise. We're not actually taking a vote on the adoption of the ordinance tonight. If a motion to advertise is approved, whether it's in its current form or with suggested amendments, as indicated by Vice President Bahe, that would be what is advertised, and then this would come back before the Board of Commissioners at next month's business meeting. So with that, I will open the floor.
President Hecker?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the definition of compliant bag by striking subsection A three, which reads, is labeled in a highly visible manner with the name of the manufacturer and the percentage of post-consumer recycled content in the bag in an easy-to-read font. Nice move.
Second.
Okay. So that has been moved and seconded. Solicitor Gallagher, do I take comment from the board on this, or do we move right to a vote when, when an amendment is brought forward?
It sounds like the board has already commented on the two...
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, okay, so...
Fine on this, because the board has already discussed these two, these two amendments.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That amendment carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a second amendment to amend section seven by striking subsections B, C, and D, and renumber, relettering section, subsection E to subsection B, this to remove the provisions regarding the mandatory fee. Nice move.
Second.
Okay. That also has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm just going to be that guy this one time, symbolically opposed.
Want to oppose.
But I respect Vice President Bahe.
Okay. So that amendment carries as well.
So the two amendments have passed, now the motion, the original motion has been amended, so there's still a vote to be taken on the actual motion to advertise. But before the board does that, we have now had the opportunity to review the ordinance. We did make some, just some grammatical and typographical changes to this. There was two substantive changes that were only going to affect if the board was going to leave in the fifteen-cent charge, so I have no substantive recommendations to the ordinance.
Thank you, Solicitor Gallagher. Okay. With that, all those in favor of advertising the ordinance as amended, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed. Commissioner Zepone opposes it.
Thank you.
One minute.
Okay. Motion carries.
Carry on. Next item of new business is BOC dash zero seven dash zero one zero nine two five, motion to appoint members to the various boards, commissions, committees, and councils as included in Exhibit A. Nice move.
Second.
And just to clarify, these are appointments of people who are already in positions, these are reappointments, these are not to appoint people to vacancies. Any vacancies will be addressed as we move forward throughout the year. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC dash zero eight dash zero one zero nine two five, motion to authorize advertisement of an ordinance regulating vape shops. Nice move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Solicitor Gallagher, do you wish to comment on this in terms of what was... Solicitor Gallagher, do you wish to comment on this in terms of what was done, you know, following last month's brief discussion?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So as the board knows, we've discussed this a couple of times, and we had taken a look at some of the ordinances that have been passed locally as well, and we expanded our search a little bit. When we were here last time, the board had asked us to take a second look at restricting the distance between these types of establishments. In taking a look at that, we do believe that that will withstand the challenge, and we did add that into this draft ordinance. The code department had suggested, and we saw no issue with a thousand-foot restriction between any existing establishment and a new establishment. We also included provisions that limited the districts that these types of establishments can go in, the hours of operation, and parking requirements. So we've reviewed this with township staff, with the code department, and I believe everybody has had an opportunity to review this and is comfortable with this in its current form. This is a zoning ordinance, so it will go to both the county and the local planning commission for review, and then come back to the board for actual consideration for adoption.
Thank you. I'll open it up for comments or questions from members of the board. Commissioner Schreiber.
Yeah, I have some questions. So first of all, if it's a motion to advertise and it has to go to those other places, do we advertise first before it goes to those?
They can go concurrently. The municipality's planning code requires that the ordinance go up to the planning commission's at least 30 days in advance of when the board will consider it for adoption. We've actually already sent these drafts up to the county planning commission, and I believe staff is working on getting it on this month's local planning commission meeting.
Okay. So the motion to advertise isn't at for the next meeting, then?
It would be for the February meeting.
Okay. It will be heard by them before that?
Correct.
Okay. That's the first question. Second, I didn't quite hear what you said about the 1,000 feet. Can you repeat that?
Yep. So the ordinance, if it passes, would restrict these establishments so that they'd have to have at least 1,000 feet in between each other. It would not affect existing facilities. But if a new one comes in, they would have to be at least 1,000 feet away from any other tobacco, smoke, vape shop, or they would have to get relief from the zoning hearing.
So is that if they are, if that's their primary use, or if there's, for example, a gas station that is also selling those products, and a new business is trying to come in, can that be within 1,000 feet?
So the ordinance defines these tobacco, smoke, and vape shops as a separate use. So it's only going to affect the businesses who, that's their principal business. So a gas station that happens to sell cigarettes is not going to trigger that provision.
And one last question. We had briefly talked about how far from a school is that still, was that addressed at all, and was there any provision for that?
We did take a look at that. That's not something that we're recommending putting in there at this point. We think that that's something that opens the ordinance up a little bit more. We did discuss this with the code department, and we believe that with the way that this ordinance is drafted, there's very few locations that would be with any proximity to a school or any other kind of institutional use. It's certainly something that we can add in, but it's just not something that we're recommending.
Okay. So you think that that would be more of a possible thing that could be challenged?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Henry.
Thank you for adding the additional ones after further review. That's great. I'm happy to see those. The first whereas clause is a little strange in its phrasing at the end, relating to the public's health, safety, and welfare. We want to add and in there?
Let me see. The first whereas clause. Yes, it should have an and in there.
Cool. Thank you.
And I will confess to using a form.
All good. Additional questions or comments from members of the board? Vice President Vahid and Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Solicitor Gallagher, as I mentioned to you before the meeting, this exceeds expectations. I'm thrilled with this. College keeps these shops off our main streets, which is, I think, is a huge win. Big, big win. And puts them in more shopping centers, which is, you know, I think, a little less intrusive than what we're seeing now. I think one of the issues with these shops that really, you know, detracts from our business areas is the lighting involved. I don't know why they all have the same kind of lighting palette. It's bizarre. I don't know that we need to address this in this ordinance, but I think perhaps we should consider our lighting in general across all commercial uses.
So we actually are looking at that.
Awesome.
Lighting in general is one of the things that the zoning officer, we're looking at a couple of ordinances, lighting is one of them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
My question is also for you. So procedurally, right, now that we're going to advertise while it's being looked at by two different bodies, they may have comments to us, we may want to change what we ultimately vote on. That won't reset any of the timeline, right? Because it's been advertised? Or does it depend on how much we change it?
It depends on how much you change it. So, you know, if we catch a typo, then that's not going to require re-advertising. If we, if the board decides that it would like to add in the restriction with schools, then that is something that would trigger re-advertising. So it really depends on what the change would be.
Do we want to add in the restriction with schools? I don't know if it's too far of a reach. I think it's worth us discussing. I don't know if we want to, it seems like, I mean, we want to pass on that, at least for now.
I think, so I think if we should look at the districts where these are limited to being established and seeing where they are in proximity to any school, and then figure out if we want to amend this. But I think it's important to get this done now, as soon as possible, and we can make amendments later.
Yes. So my opinion on that is to wait right now, have it pass, but we can always amend this later. And I think we do want to look at that.
Yeah, we did, Ms. McAvan and I were talking about that last week. Because of the districts that this is being limited to, we do think that it is pretty sparse where these could be located anywhere near a school. But we can get the specifics on that from the zoning officer.
I'd like us to do that, if we can. I don't want to slow down the process, but the only people that I've spoken to about this all mention school.
Okay. So we'll get that information before we take the final vote. Let me get the Commissioners Spiegelmann, Henry, and then Laney Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hecker. Yeah, I concur that, given the districts we're talking about, and the fact that that really does a lot of the job of keeping things away from schools, I think that the risk of making this more vulnerable to challenge isn't worth getting this done in as sort of robust a way as possible. There's not a lot I can add to what Vice President Vahid said, and yet I'm gonna. The only thing, I know, right? The only thing I would add, I wanted to point out, this is something, folks have been, folks have been complaining about this for a while, and not to toot our own horns, but really to celebrate, I think, the teamwork. You know, people came to us, and people have been posting on social media with this major, this major complaint, and working together, Solicitor's Office and your Board of Commissioners work together to make this ordinance happen. So this is responsive government, just as a little reminder. It's an actual thing, responsive, cooperative, collective action. Thank you. And see, I added to Vice President Vahid, and he was good on his own. Thank you.
Commissioner Spiegelmann. Commissioner Henry.
I was just going to add exactly.
I thought you had another typo.
So, no, no. No, I did want to bring up, I wanted to know if she was going to put a comma in there too, and that's an Oxford comma conversation that we can have privately.
Serial commas are a mandate.
But, but same. I do very much support something going into restrictive, going into school areas, but not at this time. I trust them to be, the fact that you added on to it, and I know that the priority was as airtight as possible, so the addition is really, really appreciated, and the vulnerability is not worth it at this time, I don't think.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Laney Martin.
I am, I would just like to say that this is something that I hear a lot about, a lot of people complain about these vape shops, so I'm glad that we're addressing it. And there, I can think off the top of my head, a couple of paces in my area that they're near schools, so daycares and things like that. So this would definitely, you know, in the future, we should think about that and maybe, you know, address. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Christmas.
Mr. McInnany has some comments. He just joined us, I believe, via Zoom.
Sure.
Regarding some of the questions on the floor.
Okay. Please.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. We actually anticipated this exact question with regards to the schools and had a discussion with Solicitor Gallagher about this, you know, going back and forth about if we make it too restrictive, we face a challenge. But what we looked at is by limiting the, this proposed use to, I believe it's the BC, Business Commercial Areas of the Township, there are only two schools within 1,000 feet of BC. One of them is Regina Kelly, Regina Kelly, which is back behind the Target Shopping Center. And that's within 1,000 feet of Target. If you start looking at, you know, that's edge to edge of the property. If you start looking at where the actual shop could theoretically go, it's probably beyond 1,000 feet. And then the same for Willow Hill. Willow Hill is, the edge of Willow Hill's property is technically within 1,000 feet of the edge of Willow Grove Park Mall's property. But if you measure the distance between the actual buildings themselves, it's several thousand feet, to be honest. And, you know, going further, Willow Grove Mall, any proposed shop there would be indoors, inside the mall property anyway. So, you know, I'm not naive to think that kids from grade school are walking through the mall, because I know what I was doing at that age, but this would alleviate that foot traffic past an outside store, kind of like along our, you know, our major village commercial areas and walkways.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. McInnany? Appreciate the additional information. Thank you.
No problem.
Certainly. Commissioner Schreiber.
So we just looked at, this is for BC, but did we look at eventually, maybe, like, if we were going to expand at the school part, but also expanding it to other areas, other zoning, or not?
So right now, this would limit these uses going in into the various BC districts. It would be not permitted in all the other districts.
Yeah, we're not looking at them one by one, lawyer. They're saying that they can't go anywhere else other than to areas that are zone BC.
Right. So they need zoning relief to go in. If they wanted to go into the MSH district, they need zoning relief to go in there once this ordinance is passed. Again, this will not affect existing stores.
Yes. That is good.
One final call. Any comments or questions? Okay. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Back to you, Vice President Vahid.
Next item is BOC-09-010925, motion to adopt ordinance 2223, amending the code of the Township of Abington to repeal Chapter 127 recycling. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? This is a continuation of a discussion that we've had for the last couple of months. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Last item of new business is BOC-10-010925, motion to adopt ordinance 2224, amending Chapter 92, garbage, storage, and refuse. Article 7, separation, storage, collection of recyclable materials at Section 92-40. Definition, Section 9241, residential separation and preparation requirements. Section 9242, collection from residents. And Section 9244, multifamily, commercial, retail, and institutional requirements. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the new business today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Vahid. You've been busy tonight. We're going to give you a well-deserved break, and we will now turn to the Finance Committee and Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item is FC-01010925, motion to approve the November 2024 expenditures in the amount of $2,192,886.11, and salaries and wages in the amount of $3,517,306.31, and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices, and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2025. And I so move.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
DePulcito?
Yes.
Laney Martin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Zepone?
Yes.
Young Gertz?
Yes.
Spiegelmann?
Yes.
Bowles?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Goman?
Yes.
Vice President Vahid?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Last item, FC-02010925, motion to adopt resolution number 25-004, authorizing the finance director and his/her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by First Class Township Code. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda items for this evening. Thank you, President Hecker.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Before we move to public comment to close the meeting, I did want to take a moment to acknowledge our newly-minted tax collector and treasurer, who is in the audience this evening. Karen, welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you, and keep us posted with what we can do to help the transition. Yep, thanks for being here. With that, we will open it up for comment on general matters of township business. If you have a comment that you would like to make, please come forward, and you have three minutes.
We're going to need reporters who come here regularly, and I'm going to ask reporters today to look at the past videos, because your minutes and videos do not connect. This behavior that we're seeing today, above both remarks, is not what we get. We have meetings that end in 25 minutes. Budget questions for the year were not answered, not one. The abusiveness and the dictatorial style that you regularly show is not on display, but it is in the videos, and people should look. And your videos and minutes do not match up. It's frightening. All right. I am not expressing concern. I am expressing disgust and anger on a regular basis. For four years, I have fought tooth and nail for basic commercial code enforcement. Mr. Mann, Freddie, with the approval of you, has taken a pristine and well-managed township and stomped it to the ground. Abington has a severe rat infestation that is never addressed here. A citizen told me he found a rat in his apartment. None of you asked me where that apartment was. I've brought it up three times. Open dumpsters, I have said for years, attract rats. Rats multiply faster than rabbits, and they live in packs. Instead of taking steps to control rats, Abington invites fast-food places and convenience stores to develop breeding areas for rats. There are an abundance of open dumpsters. The Old York Road Goodman-owned Noble Square has restaurant dumpsters open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for years. The new Wawa on Easton cleans once every three days and does a poor job. I've shown you photos, you do not look at them. Food spillage is left for the rats in the parking lot. Jumbo-sized plastic Wawa cups leave the parking lot and roll down Easton into the creep. I have photos. Billionaire corporations are saving money by failing to provide larger trash cans. Billionaire corporations are saving money by failing to provide larger trash cans. They want to save money, and you allow it. And easy-to-open hydraulic trash dumpsters are not being used, and that makes it difficult for the employees to open and close, and that's one reason they're open all the time. To satisfy billionaires, commissioners are destroying the standard of living. I have told you my neighborhood has rats. I photograph constantly, and I've seen them.
Ms. Kubel, please wrap up your comments. Your time has expired.
The stand.
No, 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 your time has expired. Please conclude your comments.
Hospital-connected developers and speculators are involved with all aspects of this overdevelopment that we're seeing. They are our community planners. Neighbors call petition and have, and have signed petitions. The situation is getting worse. Ms. Gallagher of Rudolph and Clark has refused to look at photos of horrific lights.
Ms. Kubel, your time has expired. Thank you, please take your seat.
I also ask for.
Ms. Kubel, your time has expired.
Mr. Christman and having gotten up.
Please take your seat.
Could you answer some of the questions I've asked for today?
Please take your seat.
I would like my petitions put into the minutes.
Please take your seat. Is there anyone else present that wishes to come forward and speak? And if not, we will turn to Zoom.
Ross Abel, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm Ross Abel. I'm Washington Lane with the Jenkington Abington Neighbors Association and co-chair of Bike Montgomery County. First off, welcome to, I'm looking forward to the partnership. For my first. Dot.
You're breaking up on us, sir.
Oh, I am? Let me try and move it. Sorry, just give me a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this better?
It seems to be for now, yes.
Okay. For my first topic, I wanted to start with some numbers. According to Pindott, from 2018 to 2022, there were seven pedestrians killed, 108 pedestrians injured, and 34 bicyclists injured by drivers across Jenkington and Abington. And Kevin McCrery, a bicyclist, was killed at the end of 2023, right at York Road in Riddle. Traffic violence is now the other biggest killer of young Americans in addition to gun violence, and the numbers are skyrocketing for pedestrians with larger, heavier vehicles. So with that said, I want to ask our Abington representatives, our staff, if you can commit to learning about supporting Vision Zero, which is the pursuit of zero traffic deaths on our streets, through traffic calming and truly safe infrastructure for pedestrians, children, the disabled, and cyclists. This is a good one for Manager Christman. I think it would be awesome if you take some of the staff, or if any of the commissioners would be up for it, to go to the Vision Zero Philadelphia Conference, which is on Friday, March 28, at Temple University. This is put on by the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia. So I would highly recommend that. I think Abington really needs to step it up and do more projects like they've done on Washington Lane, where we very heavily pursue safe streets for our residents and our families and our elderly. Get stronger with traffic calming, giving new devices for your staff and our safety officers to implement in our neighborhoods. Right now, we do not really take a very strong stance from the township in doing things like speed tables, bump outs, things that truly are going to make our streets feel safer for those of us on the ground. So I just ask that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
So extremely disappointed again in the complete lack of any response to residents with very clear and very specific questions that you decided that there was no illegality. And the way you did it is you just said, Ms. Gallagher, was there any illegality? She said, no, I spoke to the engineer. He said there was no illegality. So none of the concerns were answered. Those were violations of our zoning code. They were not fixed, to my knowledge. I asked if any of them were fixed, and we got no information. It was not in the packet that any of them were fixed. And so it's illegal. And Commissioner Hecker, you should tell Commissioner Laney Martin that it's not okay to get residents together, and they'll all agree that if they want to break the law, if the developer wants to break the law, and they're not going to protest, it's okay to do that.
Ms. Lehman, it's clear that there's a difference of opinion here. You can stop the clock. And so we will be happy to provide responses to the questions that you've raised. And I'll work with Manager Christman on that to make sure that you have answers to the questions. But we do not, our attorney and our engineer and other professional staff do not agree with your assessment, and you'll see why. And that's why we moved ahead.
And it would have been, Commissioner Hecker, so easy to explain in each one. You didn't agree with it because they fixed the landscaping? Or because it's not a violation for some reason, and you would give the reason of the zoning ordinance? There's no reason that I should have come all the way to this meeting. And as you know, I have already contacted other agencies because I alerted you that I was going to. And there's no way we should have come this far down the road to have this still on the agenda, and none of those answers given to me. It's very simple to do. It wouldn't literally have taken you more than 10 minutes to explain those answers. It may have taken you longer than 10 minutes to get them, okay? But because the residents agree to have something done that is illegal, they don't know what the laws are. They don't understand the laws. And if I give them the laws, and somebody else tells them it's no problem they can do it, who are they going to believe, of course?
They're going to believe the professionally trained attorney, Ms. Lehman, to be clear.
I'm concerned about that. And I'm concerned that the professionals that I pay will not answer me. And you're my commissioner through whom these things should be resolved. So you have, at my, from my tax money, 275 people, Commissioner Hecker, at your command to say, Ms. Lehman needs the answer to this question. Please provide it for her. And that's how our township works. Commissioner Spiegelman said a lot about how you collaboratively worked on the ordinance tonight. But you have people in the Colonnade, in 100 York Apartments, that nobody is willing to work collaboratively.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
I'm saying that together, we should be doing what Mr. Spiegelman thinks he is doing, but isn't yet. Can we do it together to help those people who are in desperate need?
Okay, thank you for your comments. I believe we have one more resident.
Katie Kempf, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name's Katie Kempf. I just wanted to bring to your attention how disruptive Astor Lumina and Fever and Abington Art Center has been to our neighbors and how it's destroying the township property, the staging area, the delivery area, in front of the Little Meeting House, completely destroyed their lawn, and has been against township code in future years. And when it's, when it's, when the staging, when Astor Lumina is being taken down in March, I want to request that they can use Albatorps maintenance area, which is well feather-suited to take down the equipment. Also, the entire project is against township code. I never received a response. Arborists have been consulted. The project's all within trees, drip lines, and trucks and construction vehicles have constantly driven over tree roots. And it's compromising all of the trees in the art center trail and along the Little Meeting House lawn. The project's also not ADA compliant, so no one in wheelchairs are able to attend Astor Lumina on township property. The noise is bothering most residents closest to the art center. And the fog from the show, it's dangerously fogging up Jenkington Road, making it dangerous. And I believe a pedestrian was hit last week or the week before. So I would like us to reconsider letting Astor Lumina, Fever, use the trail in the future. Oh, and also, they're responsible for all snow and ice removal from the trails while they are, during the term of their contract. And it's now Thursday, and they still have not removed all the ice and snow from the trail, making it dangerous for the residents to use the property. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns forward. We will follow up. And with that, we are adjourned.